Good evening, I'm going to call to order a special meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Los Gatos for the purpose of a study session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Steven Leonardi.
Here.
Councilmember Diane McNutt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Przynski.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Spector.
Here.
Mayor Steve Rice.
Here. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, clap for the leader, yeah.
Okay, Madam Attorney, closed session report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Council met in closed session tonight pursuant to the notice for the special meeting. They took no action and there's nothing to report out this evening.
Thank you. As this is a study session, we don't typically have traditional public comment during the item. However, we do have verbal communications, which is an opportunity for anybody to speak for up to three minutes on any item that is either on or off tonight's agenda. So I'm going to ask if anybody wishes to speak this evening before we get rolling on the discussion topic, if you could please turn in a card and make your way to the podium, and I'll recognize Mr. Arzy for three minutes.
Thank you. You know, I wasn't going to come tonight, but after I read staff's report, I thought I better hustle on down here. I dropped off some information for you to read at the twilight hours about the fact that, I guess I'm not the only one against what's going on with agencies telling us what to do in the Bay Area. In the conclusion of the staff report, our town manager warns you of possible consequences. I presume he's talking about high-density growth strategies, not unlike the town homes crammed against 101 at the Tamferan Racetrack. If you're driven by that freeway, you can see that that looks, that smacks like an A-Bag project. It's just right on the freeway. Some agencies don't want us to put it on the freeway, some agencies worry about smog, but it's there anyhow, and that's what I'm afraid we're going to look like in Los Gatos. And we have the perfect place for that, and that's the North Forty property that's not being used across the freeway. This is the risk you take with getting in line with agencies like A-Bag and MTC or One Bay Area. You know, the San Mateo Coast communities are up in arms about what A-Bag is suggesting, and even, and if you haven't heard, it's been out there on the news for months, the city of Corte Madre withdrew its membership from A-Bag, and I would suggest you consider doing the same thing. We can work directly with the state to establish our own plans to meet SB 375 regulations. With the lack of transparency and accountability we have within our own town government, I do not think you can control our needs by allowing regional authorities to dictate them to us. We should be able to decide for ourselves where and how we want to live. So beware, that is what the manager is saying when he claims that there will be possible consequences. Do not go blindly along the plans, as they will be unforeseen consequences. You know, we have worked very hard to get where we are, and let's not muck it up. Participation in regional governments to cram housing into our community is not mandatory. We can work out our plans and dovetail them into the regional plans. We don't have to be dictated to by the regional thing. I don't want to see the rest of the UKI property on the other side of the freeway look like Tamferan Racetrack. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none. Last chance for verbal communications, either on or off tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I'll close verbal communications and I'll look to staff for the staff report.
Good evening, Council and Councilmembers. You have a very comprehensive report in front of you, so staff is not proposing a very extensive presentation. I just want to make a couple of points and also note that this is a progress, a process in progress right now, and things are changing. It's very dynamic, and so things have changed throughout, probably even this past week. And so I'd like to just report on some updates. There are not a new report that will help you tonight with providing staff direction. First, it's really important to recognize, and we have the Venn diagram triad up that shows the relationship of the SCS, the One Bay Area Grant or O-Bag, and the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. It's all now considered part of the One Bay Area Plan. I think what's important to note is that the town has not designated a planned development area, priority, a planned or potential priority development area, or PDA. What's noted in your report is that VTA, through their cores, corridor, and station area plan, has identified a series of potential PDAs throughout the county. Two of them happen to be within the town's jurisdictions. Up until just recently, we only knew of the one, which was in the downtown area. If you look at their plan, it was included in your staff report's attachment too, you'll notice that there is a core area, which is a planned PDA per what VTA's requesting of A-Bag, in the Winchester Transit area, which is in Campbell. And that actually extends down, from what I've understood today, just today, that actually extends down into the northern portion of Los Gatos, to include the Vasiona, the planned Vasiona Light Rail area. So in reality, we do have two potential PDAs that have been designated by VTA, not by town. So we did want to bring that to your attention, because we laid out some alternatives to you, and your alternatives, various alternatives that identify we can not endorse VTA's proposal to make the downtown a planned PDA. We like the idea of if the town was to continue with a potential PDA, because as you know, that is linked to 70% of the transportation funds that will be available in O-Bag. We could work with VTA and A-Bag to try to modify that PDA, redefine it, move it out of the downtown area, because I don't think anyone believes that that's the appropriate location. Move it out of the downtown area to the 17 corridor area, where it may be more of a logical location. Lastly, the other alternative, or, well, no, there's one other. One alternative would be to just endorse the Vasiona Light Rail area, PDA, which again is that larger, they actually call it a county core, because it takes into consideration that entire corridor, the light rail corridor from Campbell to Los Gatos. And then lastly, so we can endorse that, that still would allow us some eligibility for funding. It's important to note that the funding is going to be allocated to the PDAs or to the areas that serve the PDAs, roadways that serve the PDAs. For instance, if you have a PDA in that Vasiona area, then logically, Lark and Winchester could then be serving that PDA, and so there could be some eligibility for transportation funding for that. And I think our final option is to not endorse either PDAs that VTA is proposing. We are past the period of time that A-Bag is accepting new PDAs, so that's not proposed here. And I've been in consultation with A-Bag staff to see if PDAs could be redefined, as suggested in your staff report, as one of the alternatives. I'm not sure. We may be too late for that even, and we may have to consider that in the next funding cycle, which would occur, it's the 2016 to 2019 funding cycle, which would dovetail well with our general plan update, that would occur about that same time. So I just wanted to add that new information, again, about the Vasiona area. It is much larger than what appears on their plan, which is on attachment to your staff report. It does take into consideration the Vasiona Light Rail area, so that does end up with designating two potential PDAs in the Town of Los Gatos, per VTA, not per the town. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Larson.
And if I just might add, your staff, based on the prior letters, we've sent raising questions about the A-Bag and RENA methodologies and the imposition that puts on our community. We would raise significant questions about the downtown potential PDA as it exists, in that unless Council directs otherwise, it is challenging to imagine we would ever recommend that to become a formal PDA at any point in the future, given the land use patterns and residential densities that we have downtown. So, given the new information we just got from VTA, that both downtown and the Vasiona Light Rail area are listed as potential PDAs off in the future, one option is to accept both, one option is to accept neither, or one option would be to accept Vasiona and not downtown, or vice versa, which staff would certainly not recommend. We think the appropriate steps and considerations for Council would be to reject both or to reject just downtown and hold the Vasiona as a future option, given that there's no development expectations that come for the short term, but there may be transportation funding that does accrue to the town.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Questions of staff? I seen, Councilmember Przynski.
Okay. I'm well aware of this, as a member of the A-Bag Board and also Vice Chair of the VTA Board. So I'm in a kind of interesting position to see the great theater that's occurring, and I really mean that. That's what is occurring here. Question for staff. There was a point on page nine of your staff report, second paragraph, talking about, you know, a potential PDA, section of 17 corridor from nine to 85, in concurrent with the Vasiona Light Rail element. What are you, what are you thinking in terms of a corridor from nine to 85 on 17? I mean, to me, if I understand PDAs, it's an area of high-intensity development for live-work space primarily, that is connected to some kind of transit accommodation. And that's why, if you look at all of the PDAs that have been approved, first of all, they're the big cities, or the big-end, medium-sized cities, and they're usually along the primary, either rail or freeway through affairs. So what is, what would be the envisioning of this, as you've noted in our report?
So I think staff is trying to give some alternatives that would preserve the ability to receive transportation funding. I think the concern to lose up to 70% of transportation funds, or lose the ability to compete for up to 70% of transportation funds in the county provoked us to look at alternatives. And as we looked at, we're looking at not only areas that would, could require transportation dollars in the future, but we're also looking at areas that the town is looking at potentially developing, and that would be that corridor area. That could include the North Forty area, it could include the Albright area. PDAs are intended, as you said, to provide housing, employment, amenities areas, and they should be connected by transit. So this fits, this area would fit many of those criteria. In addition, though, it would expand our opportunities, say, from Highway nine to 85 for the transportation dollars that we could receive competitively, of course, but within that 70% pool for that area. So we were trying to see where some growth could occur, per our general plan, as well as looking where our future infrastructure needs would be.
Okay, that doesn't exactly answer my question. I'm trying to see what would a corridor that was developed on the concept of PDA, what would that look like? Because if you go from nine to 85, you're talking about residential on the east side, you're talking about residential up to our park system on the west side, and then we move into the North Forty. And we've already got a plan at work for the North Forty that's not going to completely build out the North Forty if we move in the direction we're taking. I can't see how that actually would serve as a corridor unless we were to change the configuration of the residential on both sides to something other than what it is and to, you know, we've got this park in the way that kind of impacts it.
I think staff's envisioning that would be really infill pockets. It's not really looking at holistically, comprehensively changing the existing land uses, but infilling those pockets that are not developed, such as the North Forty, or that are proposed for redevelopment, such as the Albright property. So it's not looking at changing existing land use patterns, but infill in certain locations where the development is planned.
After the manager.
Go ahead, Madam, Mr. Manager.
And if I could just add, a significant difference between a potential PDA and a PDA. All that's being considered here, and the idea that Genesis was actually out of discussions with the VTA, when we were trying to understand why downtown was being listed as a potential PDA. And the prospect of Highway nine and Highway nine and 17 improvements arose, so this would be one way, if the Council wanted to preserve a potential of funding from the state or regional authorities for that corridor for transportation improvements, you could designate this as a potential PDA, not as a PDA. The determination of whether or not there's a PDA there would be done in the next general plan process, and that's where we'd answer just the questions you've raised of what development opportunities, if any, are there, and if there are none, then it probably wouldn't go forward from that point forward as a PDA.
Well, I have some notes on that particular paragraph, and I saw this as a placeholder for some kind of revenue stream from the 70% in competition with an awful lot of other PDAs. My understanding is that there is a great deal of concern in the smaller communities being shut out of the monies compared to where we were before we started all this process and decided to really reinforce this grand plan for SB 375. And I guess my concern would be if we propose potential PDAs, then at a certain point in the future, it kind of sets the stage for an actual development of a PDA, which I think is really contrary to where we are as a community. It's not going to happen. I mean, the fact that the VTA said, meaning our Highway nine and 17, a good entrance into downtown, I think that either says that they have no idea what Los Gatos is like, or this was an effort to put something on the table for us, where there isn't anything that really appropriately exists. And I think that we're going to be left with the competition for the 30%. I wouldn't really feel comfortable in saying, let's create kind of a phantom PDA in the future that we could perhaps be held accountable for at a certain point, when we're taking money out of the 70%, and I think it's going to be tough. We are going to be financially impacted by this because of the changes that are taking place. So that, you know, you've answered my questions, I appreciate it, but that would be my comment, is it kind of, just don't go there, take our chances, find other ways to fund our streets and roads. Don't rely on this, this kind of game that's being played here.
Okay.
And I would also add that the new information that Ms. Rooney got from VTA suggests it's probably too late for any consideration like that anyway, given VTA has already put forward a downtown potential PDA that we don't think is appropriate for the town.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a couple of comments. This was an exceedingly substantive, well-written report, difficult to plow through, but it had a lot of information. Secondly, with regard to page nine, I, in my own mind and in my notes, raise the same issue. What are you talking about when you go 17 from Highway nine to, was Highway 85? Now the question. With regard to these fundings that are at issue, regional and state funding for traffic improvements, are those funds that are currently being allocated?
Excuse me, while I got the mic on. Yes, this talks about essentially the same pots of money that have historically been allocated among the cities, and there has kind of been a disjointed approach to how the funds have been allocated. Not everything has been coordinated centrally by VTA or even MTC. In many cases, historically, towns and cities have been able to apply directly to the state or to the federal government for things like the STP funds. In fact, we most recently got an STP grant for the University Avenue resurfacing, which will be proceeding later this summer. And when we do that, we've simply made VTA and MTC aware, and so they track us as just kind of being the, you know, our CMA, so they help us along through the process. What the proposed process will be is that the funding will be block granted to the local CMA, which in our case is VTA. It's that $87 million figure that you've seen, and the 70-30 split would mean that without the existence of a planned or potential PDA, that in this county, we would essentially be competing for about $26 million. So we could be shut out from the other 61 million. Historically, it's hard to say how successful you're going to be. In the report, we've noted that we typically receive between $500,000 to $1 million annually, but there are also years where we've got nothing. So it's, that's how grant funding works. But how the proposal will be from this point forward is that it will be under the management of the CMA.
Thank you. You answered all my questions, and at this juncture, I'm looking forward to hearing the other three people, but I concur with Mr. Przynski.
Go ahead, Councilmember McNutt.
Thank you. I also want to commend staff on the report. You tried very hard to make it understandable and interesting. And I only broke into giggles twice over the acronyms, so that was a good thing. You know, this reminds me so much of the housing element, where it's all a fabrication, and there's no real expectation on the part, in my opinion, of either the agencies or the town, that we actually would produce the number of housing units that we are assigned. But it goes into the record, it becomes a document that does planned development and expectations of the community and of applicants, and that's why I think it's dangerous, as, I've already forgotten which one of you we're talking about, that once you have that there, if you had an area from Highway nine north, that those could be put into a much higher density, which would not work in this community. So I think we should take our chances on competing for the 30%. I don't think we'd have that great of a chance for the 70% anyway, because San Jose's going to suck it all up, because they've got, you know, all of the big projects and the big needs for congestion reduction. So I just, I hate to have another wink and a nod kind of document out there, like I feel like we do with housing element.
Thank you. I'm sure that someplace in Sacramento, in somebody's office, this looked like a great idea on paper. I just think it's an absolutely horrendous idea for Los Gatos, ceding any more authority than the state has already taken from us, or regional agencies have already taken from us. We saw what happened when the density bonus came on Riviera Terrace, and in essence, we were, we had the authority removed from our control. And the traffic impacts and the school impacts and the various infrastructure needs, oh, well, not much we could do about it. I just don't think, personally, I would say we don't endorse any PDAs and reject them outright.
Councilmember Leonardi, did you want to?
I'll weigh in briefly. I agree with the mayor's comments about not endorsing any PDAs at this time. I think it's jumping the gun, and rules will probably end up changing again anyway by the time, by the time we adopt the 2020 general plan. So that's my thoughts.
Mr. Manager.
So just to clarify, because we've been using PDA and potential PDA. Town staff has already spoken against any PDA. We didn't need Council direction for that. We will now carry forward the same message to A-Bag, that not only are we not interested in PDAs, we don't see potential PDAs as currently defined by VTA as in our future either. And that's the direction staff is taking out of this.
That's mine, yes. Councilmember Przynski.
Okay. Just to let you know, this discussion, I'm sure, is occurring in almost every city or town council in the nine Bay Area counties right now, because this is the response. Now we're going to be forced to compete even more rigorously for the few dollars that are available for roads, bicycle lanes, safe routes. And the bigger cities are going to take, going to have the opportunity to fund some major projects for purposes of fulfilling SB 375. And it's very interesting, being in these A-Bag and then a joint A-Bag/MTC meeting, where no one was happy, and I think the bottom line was, well, we'll create the draft, and then you guys do what you want. I think that's really what it's going to come down to, is it will go back to local control, and we will be able to continue to do what we're going to do, but we will have to be more rigorous in the way we create our eligibility for the fewer dollars that are available to us, and the state will survive. And some consultants and people who do this for a living are going to be wealthy and go into their retirement. But for the rest of us, we're going to, we're going to have to see if we can't achieve what we need to achieve with fewer resources, and I would assume that that will be a commonly held feeling. The San Mateo Coast was very clear, and Mr. Arzy's memo was very, was very clearly discussed back on March 15th, and there was a determination at that point, is that the intention of, I think it was the County Board of Supervisors over there in that county, they saw lots of money available to them if they to them if they could create some kind of PDA on the coast. And, you know, other than being drawn and quartered at that point in time, the reaction was immediate and real obvious, and that's been constant throughout this dialogue. There's a July meeting where they're going to sign off on this, and what I think is going to be signed off on is basically a theoretical position that fulfills a theoretical rule out of SB three seventy-five. And good intentions, but as you execute it, pretty difficult to pull off.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Question of the mayor or staff, are you looking for a motion to say we don't want any PDAs? Or is it an obvious consensus?
That's what I was trying to clarify. It's an obvious consensus. Staff is fully supportive of that. No motion or direction is needed. This is a study session. There is no formal action that needs to come back to council. As with our prior letters opposing PDAs in Los Gatos, we will, of course, copy the council on those as we submit them.
Any other questions, comments? There's nothing further on the agenda. We're adjourned.